I do it all the time. Not normal for me, no. And it isn't like I can sit in a car for four or five hours and not have to go watch TV and watch it all of a sudden. Yeah, like I said, I wasn't trying to lose it. Now I'm trying to maintain that lower weight. Yeah. To maintain that lower weight right here.
Yeah, so that's what I was thinking of. Except my dad is usually something could be.
Trying to maintain it. Thanks for asking. I don't want to lean down, you know, for your view. Okay, reset.
This is the work session of City Council, April 15, 2024. First item is review of minutes. If anybody has any comments today, we'd be happy to take them. Just anything you can bring it up next week. Okay, that's the minutes, of course, of the last of the March meeting. It's not on the agenda, but I did want to mention that financials were sent out to council today for the end of February. And they look very similar to last year. City sales tax is up, county sales tax is up, total operating revenues up 10.5% for the first two months of the year compared to last year. And the expenses so far running quite a bit below budget. So it looks like $443,000 low budget. So we're off to a good start, I'd say, so far. But you can study those over and I'll let you know next week.
Quick question? And I actually came in to see Kim today, but one thing I noticed after I got home is that franchise fees are up considerable. Is that just a pacing thing? Or does that come in pretty consistent month over month? Is Kim in here?
I'm here. I'm sorry, Kim.
The franchise fees, I notice they're, you know, pretty significant year-to-date. Is that just a pacing thing?
Yes, it, uh, let me just say this. You know, Kyrill Lecter did a, um, a taxing, I'm sorry, rate increase. And when they do rate increase, our franchise fees is up.
So.
Good question.
Let's go ahead. Yeah, we saw a few aberrations on there. The first couple of months, the property tax revenues are way lower than last year. And it must be timing how the counties doing. We noticed they made up for it in March. So we're going to be back on schedule. So our revenues are up even with the property tax being way off, so that's good. Now, continuing on with the agenda, I want to skip ahead to item H. It is on the financial side. It's a resolution amending the 2024 budget to recognize and appropriate development impact fee revenue and authorize expenses for the library and police department. Kim, could you say a few words about that?
Uh, yes, you have seen these numbers in January. Uh, we were doing a resolution in January for this, but when I reviewed the resolution, it wasn't quite what I was expecting. So we're, um, we're, what would you say, not amending the resolution, we're doing it directly for these expenses. So it, so this will be incorporated in the resolution.
But these are all things that are covered by the impact fee. And if you look at the attachment on item H, it, uh, attachment behind item H, it shows what they are. It's for the police department and for some things the fire depart, or the library was ordering.
These were all expenses that we, we discussed in January. There's no change in the expenses. Uh, the only, the only change is, is that we're doing a resolution specifically for those expenses. That's all, that's all that we're doing.
Rather than allowing all of the money collected in that account to be available.
Right. And with brand, with, um, impact fees, each, uh, I'm going to say each group of expenditures has to be approved by the city. So you basically set up a mini-budget for the use of those franchise fees. Uh, because they're, they can only be used for certain purposes, so that's why they're, they require your approval. And the resolution wasn't exactly what I was thinking it should be. And so I talked to Jason and he agreed, let's just fix it so it's tidy. I don't know how, what else to say. It just, I like it to be tidy with the exact expenses that are going through. And it's not, there's no revenue here. I think the title of this says something about recognizing revenue. No, we're just recognizing the expenses.
Any questions for Kim? Okay, thanks, Alex. Thanks, Kim. Let's forward ahead with the regular agenda. Item A is an ordinance requiring candidates for election, Ginnie, municipal office, and city Bell Vista, in addition to any other requirements they law to file campaign contribution expenditure reports with Bell Vista city clerk and sufficient time for voters to make use of such information prior to the beginning of early voting and for other purposes. And this is, um, third reading.
Let me give you an update just before y'all start talking about it. As I checked today, this afternoon, the AG is still not rendering any kind of opinion on this issue. That's all I want to say.
Um, Mindy McAllen.
Mickelund.
Mickelund. Did send, I think it was a text to Doug and I saying that she talked to the attorney Gerald. She had the feeling he was going to render opinion fairly soon.
Yeah, I don't personally have any further comment about it now. There's been a lot of conversation, discussion about it. So, you know, rather than spend time on it tonight, I'm going to wait until next Monday. I do have further comments to make, but I'm going to hold on to them until then. And that, that refers both to item, item A and the amendments. It's okay, the resolution as well.
Okay. Yeah, the resolution B is the one expressing the opinion of the city council that citizens should be highly vigilant about the influence of partisan and special interest group campaign contributions. So the two of them are somewhat related, I guess you'd say. Okay, next one is new business and ordinance amending section 10940 zoning ordinance amendment to code of ordinances, city of Bell Vista to modify notice requirements related to planning commission initiated zoning amendments and for other purposes. Taylor, did you want to give an explanation of this?
Sure. Um, I was doing some research in preparation for our zoning reform that we are currently under right now. We are currently reviewing the zoning code we're in phase two. And part of that is in preparation for the amendments and changes in public hearings that we're going to have this fall, winter, and then some to notify the public. Um, it seems like we are, our code requires a very stringent process to notify the public, a lot more than nearby cities and state statutes and things like that. Um, it requires us to pay a lot more for our legal ads than other cities do. Um, we have really expensive legal ads because of what our code currently requires to be put in them, because, you know, it's, um, it's so many cents per word. So we are, we are making huge public hearing ads. I don't know how many people actually check the public hearing section of the weekly Vista, but if you go, you just see words down the whole weekly Vista page that are our public hearings, because we have to legally describe the property question, which is a lot of words, which means a lot of money. Um, so staff is proposing with support of the mayor and with the recommendation of the planning commission to reduce the cost of that, to save some money, um, on what we're legally required to do, because this isn't something that we have the choice of doing. The state statutes are required that we notify the public of public hearings on development ordinances, rezones, things like that. It's just we have to pay a lot more than other cities. So we're hoping to streamline that and save some money on the city side by reducing that, but still complying with state statutes, everything else.
Does the planning commission agree on this?
Correct, they recommended approval. No one showed up for the public hearing. I've still not received any public comments on this. Um, I don't have anything further to add than that.
It's really a question, an issue of us putting an expensive burden on ourselves that the state does not require us to do. And we're, we're just wanting to do what the state requires us to do, which is full notice, don't get me wrong, but save a lot of effort and time as such as well.
Oh, plus our neighboring communities don't do that, right? Bentonville and Centerton, I think.
I don't think so, but I'd have to.
Yeah, Bentonville, Centerton. I listen to cities there that just follow state statutes. Um, this one's actually pulled directly from Bentonville's, this amendment, so we'd be very aligned with our adjacent neighbor.
Larry, did you have something you wanted to add?
I guess I was a little bit confused and maybe I misinterpreted what the request was. It seemed to me that on city-initiated rezonings, that this would be the protocol that we would use.
Correct.
But on owner-initiated, you go through the standard protocols that we've done in the past.
So rezoned applications specifically as an example?
Yes.
Yes, they would follow the typical protocol, um, which is pretty standard everywhere. Two hundred, everyone within 200 feet gets certified mail or petition, the legal ad that staff does, and then the staff also posts a public hearing sign in the front yard. State statutes require city-initiator, city-initiated rezones to public, publish a notice in the paper that notifying the date, time, and public hearing, um, and not the legal description or any of that, as well as we have to notify all the school boards now. Um, that's a new state statute, so we do send a letter to all the school boards. We have three of them here every time we have a zoning or development ordinance or rezone, things like that. So we'll still be doing that, still publishing on the website. Um, we're just consolidating it and basically keeping a nice, uh, map on site, basically, probably CDS City Hall on our website, um, rather than all of the items we're doing right now.
I've, I've proposed an amendment to this in the, to clarify the posting currently. It says, um, "A map indicating proposed changes shall be available in the mayor's office or at a convenient location designated by the mayor." Um, my thinking is, is that we do have designated posting locations in the city or a location.
Larry, I don't think that we do. Uh, there's a, there's a bulletin board out front of City Hall.
Right, yeah.
That's our bulletin board. We don't have designated posting locations.
Not any longer, but that is one that you post at. So it's a designated location.
Not, 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 we don't post, we don't post everything on it.
Oh, you don't?
No. Cassie can talk a little bit more about that, that bulletin board out front. You know who, how that gets handled?
As far as I know, it's just the agendas get put out there, windy comes out there.
There's three or four or five designated posting locations around the city. One was at City Hall, and the rest of them were designated public places. Might be a bank, might be a grocery store. Um, but that was up until? 18 or 19? 2018, 2019, I don't know if it's changed after that or not. So, and so my amendment would be instead of, instead of at a convenient location designated by the mayor, my proposal is and at the city's designated posting locations, thinking we still had those. And if not, it would be the, the City Hall posting location.
Well, plus, the existing proposal says "or," and your amendment says "and," so makes it more verisim.
Make it available to you and, and put one out on that city side.
Following the original proposal cover us legally with the "or" signature?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
So Taylor, is this just basically a map similar to what we get in our packets for us to view?
None of that will change. Um, that'll all be the exact same.
I mean, the map that'll be posted.
The map that will be posted, yes. It'll be either the specific lot, or if there's multiple, it'll be a little bit bigger. Uh, but yeah, it'll be either exactly what you get already on the staff report that's already published to the public, um, or when we have mass rezones or larger rezones, we get a bigger map that are unique identifiers on.
So, uh, why don't we hit the next item then, if we've just done. Uh, B is an ordinance waiving the requirements of formal competitive bidding authorization to contract with Superior Automotive Group, amount not to exceed $120,000 for the purchase of two 2024 Chevrolet Tahoe police vehicles for use by the police department. Uh, Chief, we'd like to say a few words.
Uh, this is just, uh, threw the vehicles out of the ones we are allotted in our capital budget for 2024. Chevy Tahoe still is not on a Arkansas competitive bid sheet. It's just nobody listed, they're just not doing it. Well, some other police vehicles are ending up on the bid, uh, on the Arkansas bid sheet. Um, so we're asking for the, the standard bid waiver that we've been doing for the past several years, since this has been a problem, uh, using Superior Automotive at a, at a very competitive price. Uh, we keep track of his price compared to other people's prices, and it's competitive, plus they have the stock of what we need in stock, and he holds it for us when, when we're ready for it, so.
And this is in the budget?
It is in the budget, yeah. It was in the capital budget for 2024.
Why, uh, why two Tahos and four Durangos, one out of six Durango?
Okay, so the Durango, okay, because, uh, we try to get, the Durangos we've never used before, so this is the first year we're actually pushing out the police Durango as a patrol model, so we're not fully comp, well, I don't always say confident, we don't know how to perform them. So we, we want to get it out in the fleet first to see our performance. Uh, plus some of the Tahos are used as command vehicles, plus some of the Tahos are used in the field as supervisory vehicles. So we'd like to keep a mixed fleet, um, of two different platforms. And right now, those platforms move into the future will likely be, if the Durango works out, it'll be the Dodge Durango, primarily because it's less expensive and it's a smaller platform. So for patrol, it'll be a better model overall, we think. And then a, a, mixed in with some Tahos in the fleet, so.
Durango police package?
Yes.
Explorer doesn't do that yet?
Uh, they, they do, but what happens, we went with Explorers a few years back when they were like the, or the size of the Durango Explorer. And you'll see, we still have a few in the fleet, so the first year I, I got several of those with the same idea, the time of doing Explorers and Chargers, okay? And then the first year I got a bunch of Explorers, formed the side of change the Explorer platform and make it more like a Tahoe. So now the Explorer is about the size of a Tahoe, plus it costs about what a Tahoe does, so it, it doesn't do for us what we were hoping.
It's actually smaller. I got one.
No, it is smaller, but it's, it's bigger than it was.
Yeah.
It's bigger than the Durango, and it's more, it's, the price-wise is almost near the Tahoe.
Yep.
Okay, so that's why I decided to try the Durango.
So really, the Durangos replacing the Charger, because they stopped doing the Charger?
Because the Charger, yeah, they stopped, they stopped doing all-wheel-drive V8 Chargers, and, and we want to stick with V8, because we did the V6 before, and they just, they just don't last with the way the police department uses them. And then we wanted all-wheel drive because ice and everything, and so, uh, they, they went away from that, and now they're going away totally from the Dodge Charger. Uh, they're going to have V6 two-wheel drive, I believe, and so it doesn't, it doesn't work for us, and so we're trying the Durango now.
Okay. Okay, well, head on, then. There's a few items that look like they're in your bailiwick here. Next one is approving body worn camera and in-car camera policies for the police department.
So this is in conjunction with, in the capital budget for the next five years of the police department. The city council approved the Axon body, body worn camera plus in-car camera system for the police department moving away from watch guard, which is sort of defunct. Uh, and so this is just a policy we need in place before we implement that. So we, we purchased the cameras this year, we're starting to implement the program, though before we issue them out, you have to have a policy in place. And so this policy is for both the in-car camera and body worn camera, two separate policies. We thought it would work better with two separate policies. Uh, we, I've sent them through, uh, through legal, they've been vetted and looked at, and so, uh, we believe this is a good policy. This is a policy we didn't invent it ourselves. I believe we took it from, oh, maybe Rogers or Fayetteville, but one of those, Fayetteville does use Axon, so we, we, you know, instead of reinventing the wheel, we try to find a policy that's already at work, and we try to massage it to, to our specific needs, and so that's where it comes from.
When you say you massage it, because that's what I was going to ask, if you use, you know, some, someone else's, that they'd already put one together, which makes a lot of sense for me, obviously. When you say you massage it, is there anything you change specifically?
Not, 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 not the big things, not the big things. Um, uh, and really, in this case, I don't think much of anything except going in there and, and replacing, like, if it was Fayetteville with Bellavista and, and things like that, so. Um, but as far as the meat and potatoes, no. I told my folks, you know, find an existing policy, you know, uh, make it our policy in that, make it fit us, and then I review it and read it, make sure it covers everything. I don't go back and compare it to the, to the original policy, if that's what you're asking.
But that, yeah, that's fine. And then the other thing is the automatic trigger, right? They automatically get triggered. I'm just a curiosity question, what, what, how does something, how does it get automatically?
So, so the, the camera gets triggered by certain things, like in a vehicle, for example, uh, when you reach a certain, you could, you could set the system to where the in-car camera, as soon as they flip the lights on, the, the in-car camera goes off, as well as the body camera would go off at the same time. Uh, or you could exceed a certain speed and you, you want the camera to trigger. So there's certain triggers you could put on the camera systems, both the body worn camera and in-car camera, to, to make them activate, okay?
When they hit 90.
When they hit 90, if you set it at 90, it would go off, okay? Yeah, so, so there's certain things that we want them to go off automatically. Um, the, the body worn camera, that's mostly activated manually, okay? There is something in the system where someone else nearby activates service manually. All of them within range activate manually, okay? But the, but the cameras are always, just, you know, they're always, they're always recording, and so you don't miss anything. So, so if, if, um, you know, you, you activated it, you, you would still get something that led up to that incident would then be memorialized. But if it's never activated, that just gets overwritten, if that makes sense.
So if the officer's on patrol, maybe when he exits the car, they automatically just, they automatically turn them on?
They would be turned on, plus they would manually, I don't, they would manually turn them on as well, but, but even if they didn't get a chance to turn them on, okay, and they're turned on after the fact, or they're triggered after the incident, like in a shooting, you may not get a chance to turn on your camera, okay? But, but it would, the trigger, it would be activated, and then you would catch what led up to the shooting, like, I believe it's 20 or 30 seconds prior to whatever the trigger event was. So you catch, you don't catch audio, but you catch a video, a, a visual of what led up to the trigger event, okay? So that helps us, because, you know, if the trigger event happens, you don't have time to activate your camera, then you kind of miss what led up to it and what caused the trigger event, okay? So there's, they're always recording, and they get overwritten if a trigger event doesn't happen. So this is just a policy, once we get this, this is part of, getting the cameras, cameras implemented, the policy approved by council next Monday. Uh, we're starting some training, I believe, next week for all the officers on the, on the body worn and in-car camera system. They'll start to be issued out next month, and cameras will start to be installed in cars, I believe, the second week in May as well, and that process will take probably, probably a good month or so to get everything done. As officers get issued cameras, uh, and their cars get cameras, they'll go out with the cameras. We will have, for a period of time, because there's still some watch guard cameras out there, we'll have a couple of systems out there for a period of time, but, you know, more is better, so it doesn't really matter. So we'll keep watch guard running until we get all of Axon online.
Chief, I didn't ask you this before, but we have redacting software, is that correct? Because one of the things that happens is that we can expect to have more public information requests to look at.
Yeah.
And so we, there are all these things that are on the video which are not disclosable, like the data on the computer next to the office. How's that, is that going to be?
Yeah, so that was a part of getting this, it took me a while to get this system in place, I mean, years, because we wanted to get the building in first. This is a big event, and, and I needed a, a body specifically for this system. So I actually have an officer who's been in place, uh, he's put sort of overseeing records, but his primary function is the Axon system, getting it online right now, and then one of his primary functions will be working the redaction software for that, because we will get a lot more FOIAs, references, sort of stuff. And then, um, and he'll, he'll, his job will be to go through somebody FOIAs, you know, I want all your video for X. I mean, that's a pretty big thing sometimes. That could be, uh, it could be hundreds of hours at times of recordings that we have to go through, but we do have redaction software that we bought as part of the program to make it as easy as we can, where he'll be able to go through and, and redact, like Jason said, certain things, if you go into someone's house and it's a private thing, privacy thing, or if there's juveniles in the building, you have to redact, just like you would with a black Sharpie on paper, you have to actually, um, redact them out of the video, um, with this software. So it'll, it's a big process, and it's, it's labor intensive, but other agencies do it, so it's just a matter of getting there, but we do have, uh, an individual place to do all the redactions.
Can, can, Jason, can the request, FOIA request be limited, like say, for a person to ask for all the video for the past two years? Can, can that request be limited?
No, not really. Uh, I mean, unless it's otherwise exempted pursuant to the FOI, but it's, it's just like today, someone, now that I say that, someone could walk into our office and say, I want to see every piece of paper that City of Bell Vista ever created. That's an awful request, uh, and it may, you know, we have a certain amount of time in which to respond, but there is no, that I'm aware of as we speak, I don't think there's a special timeframe or limitation on these, in, these police-related, uh, worn cameras. There, there are police records, like other police records, that would be handled. There are police records, like other police records, that would be handled in the same way.
Can we charge for the service?
Well, actual costs.
Yeah, that's what I mean, just.
But I don't know how you go about calculating that, not including labor, because it's really all about the labor.
You can't charge for labor?
No.
You could, you could charge for like, reason what it costs.
If they, if we could charge them for the thumb drive, we'd put it on.
If you can't charge them for labeling, that's the expensive part. It's just something we end up, it's just part of business.
This is a part, this is one of the things, this is, it's not just us, this is, this is nationwide, and it's Arkansas in particular, of the, of the, the impact of the body worn cameras on information requests and the burden that that is on the various IT departments around city governments and local governments, police departments. It's, it is known that it is quite a job, and yet we're still expected to comply.
There are people that make a living at this. If you go to YouTube, and there should be the show Cops, and it's still around, but if you go to YouTube, all those, there's people on there that make money. Alls they do is they FOIA high-speed chases and just high, low-frequency, high-risk events from big agencies, and then they make little movies out of them, and then they make money. And you go to YouTube right now, and you can find a dozen of those.
I can't imagine how many the state police do, because there are several channels of Arkansas state police that just post the high-speed highway chases and the result and all of that. There aren't dozens of them.
Luckily, we're relatively peaceful, and we're surrounded by bigger agencies, so, you know, too late now. But, you know, so people mostly leave us alone, but, you know, it's just part of their business.
That'll be our new city motto, Bella Vista, we're under the radar.
Well, I'll tell you, the way I think about it, as the prosecutor, we already provide, we do a lot of work just to provide data from the cameras that we have that are in the car. We're going to have a lot more of that now, because the officer is going to walk up to the car if, if the video got triggered. We're going to be able to see the eyes of the driver who's intoxicated. There's a lot more evidence that's going to be generated in criminal prosecution to do this, too.
Yeah, don't take a negative way from this, this is really a net positive. It ultimately, you know, it saves, officers like it, because it backs them up, it saves us 99 times out of 100 before it hurts us. So it's really, and if we have a problem out there, we want to know anyways.
Keeps everyone honest.
Keeps everyone honest, and if we do have a problem, then we're able to identify it and take care of it a lot quicker. So it's a good thing.
Thank you. The next one is item D, approving an organizational structured chain of command policy for the police department.
Yeah, this is just another policy. We were going through policies and, you know, realizing we may have had a little bit of a, we had some policies, talking about chain of command, but we never had clearly defined it in a policy, and decided we just really, really needed to clearly define it within an, it's a standalone policy, that's all this is, just identifying or clearly defining what a chain of command is and how individuals within the organization will use their chain of command.
This is actually a new policy.
It is, this is a new policy. Chain of command was mentioned in several other policies throughout our policy manual, but we did not have a standalone, this is what chain of command is, this is its definition, this is how it will be used, and this is how you will use it.
I noticed that, I believe she's a corporal now. Evans was, I think, Evans, Ms. Lyons?
I'm sorry?
Maybe Lyons?
Yes.
Is that a recent change or promotion?
To corporal? Oh, she's been a corporal for what?
I mean, public information officer.
Oh, no, that, a move to there, probably about, I think I did that sometime last year.
Really?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
Will you need to amend the ordinances that make references to?
No.
This?
No, because they just talk about chain of command, but they just don't define it. They just say, in this scenario, you'll go through your chain of command. But nowhere in the manual have we said, this is what a chain of command is. It's one of those things where you don't think you really need to explain it, but then you realize later on, okay, I probably need to explain it, because sometimes things happen.
So now it will point to something, actually?
Not necessar, well, yeah, if somebody reads something and says, go through your chain of command, they're like, what is a chain of command? They could go, oh, here's a policy record of chain of command.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Uh, next one is resolution E, granting the appeal file regarding development waiver 2024-53084 at 15 Carroll Ray Lane. Taylor, did you want to say something about this?
Do you want to say anything?
Well, I was just going to explain, I don't know that you've ever seen one of these before, but our code provides that, that there are certain development requirements that can be waived by the planning commissions. And this was one of those applications. The planning commission denied that waiver. And so the ordinance, our code ordinances says, if that happens, then they have a right to appeal that decision to the city council. And so that is what you have here. They have appealed the denial of a development waiver related to this application at this address. And that's where all that toter take over.
Okay, we haven't had one in a really long time. So I think this is the first one since I've been here, at least the last four-plus years, that we've had a waiver appeal go to the city council. This is over the subdivision development regulation regarding driveway grades, which is currently set at 12% max, with an administrative variance up to 14%. They requested 17%, which means it's more than 14%. So it had to go to the planning commission via a traditional waiver request. There are four requirements that the planning commission must find true, to find all of them true before they can grant a waiver. They could not find all four, so they denied this waiver request, and so the applicant has appealed that decision here. The provided plot plan in the planning commission packet, which is what you guys will be considering with this resolution appeal decision, they're showing a 17% grade along the entire driveway. However, towards the edge of street, our, our engineer calculated over 30% grade from edge of street into their private property. So basically, what was happening is the plan that they are appealing to tonight was not showing the true proposed contours, if that makes sense. They're labeling them as 17%, but the plot plan designer was not showing how those contours were tying into the existing. So our engineer did that, found it was over 30%. So the request of 17% was not true, if that makes sense. They were requesting 17%, but they were not showing 17%. The applicant is here tonight, if you guys have questions for them. I did want to note, with their appeal letter, they turned in a new application, which is not under consideration tonight, it is just additional information that's in your packet. It does show true proposed contours that are connected to existing, and it does show a 17% grade all the way from edge of street to the house, which of course, as you know, via the new ordinance that we amended, goes live in June, that will be something that our staff can consider internally as 17%.
One thing I want to add is, they cannot, this is an appeal from the application they previously filed. So if they wanted to file a different request, that would have had to be a starter, basically, go back and then go that, the planning commission would have a chance of that. So you are reviewing whether or not the, the application which was denied should be granted. And I would also add, because the ordinance says what factors you look at determining that, you are bound by that just as much as the planning commission is. So you are, you are bound by those requirements as well.
So we're deciding that are the old ordinance, basically? And my understanding is the new ordinance becomes effective June 3rd?
Take some word on that, publication date.
So how many days, how many days into this old application is the applicant? I mean, like 60 days, 90 days? I mean, where are they at in the mix?
So this is just a waiver application. Last I checked, the GEC building application, nothing's been applied for yet. This is a house that has not started. They're still in the planning phase. This isn't a house that's sitting or anything like that.
If, if the 2020 rule was in effect now, would this waiver be required?
As the waiver that you guys are considering right now, yes, because of edge of street, the plot plan shows a, over a 30% grade, which is more than the 17% downhill that you guys just approved.
So this submitted a new?
A new plan that you guys are not considering tonight. You are only considering the plot plan that the planning commission did.
Wait, wait a minute, so.
Don't they need to just take their new application back to the planning commission and not appeal this one? If they want to do something different?
I've not received an application yet, just that plot plan that showed up with the appeal letter to our city clerk.
Haven't appeared to be a much more successful route, but I.
That's kind of what I see.
Can we allow the applicant?
The applicants are here.
Do we apply, is that what you're saying?
So depending on which way you go, well, the 17% that you guys submitted could be considered under the new ordinance, June 3rd, with just a GEC application, not a waiver.
So when we submitted the, we were told that when it was denied by the planning commission, that we would have to appeal to you guys.
Right.
Which is, while we had the plot plan changed, that's why we did all the things, and we didn't understand, so I apologize for that.
You're normal people and not lawyers, so that's totally understood.
Right. I think what I'd like to say is, we have home builders who would really like to move forward, and we want to do what we, what we can do to further that for them, so that they can build the home that they'd like to build.
I can't, I can't speak for these people, but it sounds to me like that you probably would not want to pursue this angle, because I, I don't know that there's grounds for it. But if you have a different application with a different plan, I think the staff would look at that, and then, especially since this new requirement's coming into effect soon, probably be able to be a lot, closely able to do something that you would like, rather than through this route we're talking about. But I can't speak for them, I haven't seen anything, don't know whether it would be okay or not.
So, I mean, basically, what y'all are considering is what we submitted before, and it was tonight.
That's all they can consider.
At the last council meeting, I asked, I think I asked Taylor specifically, if you've got, and I think I may have been referring to this particular location, if you've got 20 foot at the, at the house that is level and.
The driveway, at the garage in?
Right, you've got 20 foot there that's level and accessible with a vehicle to the garage, then from the, from there to the street is immaterial.
Go 20 feet.
20 feet from the street, so the street, 20 feet from the street out, that's regulated. From the garage out, or in, it's 20 feet, and that's what we care about, and everything else is.
So it's a hundred foot long, all we care about is this 40, we don't care about the 60 in the middle.
Not, I'm gonna let Taylor speak for herself, but I think she's saying that even within that 20 feet, there's, there's, there's too much sloping.
What you guys are considering right now, there is a 30% grade from edge of street, which would not.
What we're considering now, if they resubmit a new.
But there's a new plot plan.
It's going to be 17.
That meets the new ordinance. But you can't consider that.
I understand that, but they could pull this and resubmit the new, right?
Is there, is there any possibility, I mean, we're respectfully, to get this done in a timely manner, is there any way that you can vote on an emergency something so that it can go into effect immediately? As you were all in agreement, and so I don't know, like, June 3rd is.
The planning commission has to give you that.
The planning commission or the staff, if it's June. But if it's before that, then it would have to be the planning commission. But, no, there's no vote that we could make now to just say what you're wanting to do is okay. There is no mechanism to do that.
And so, okay, and so when would the next opportunity to go in front of the planning commission be?
I'm gonna let, we need to talk to Taylor about that, because I don't, I don't know what the schedule is.
We can talk after this. I can send you an email.
So we'll, this is still on the agenda, and we're, and y'all will talk, and then if, Taylor, if they decide they want to pull this, can you let me know?
Yep.
And if it's before we issue the final agenda, we'll take it off.
And, and we're sorry for not understanding, I'm sorry.
No, we don't understand it half-time ourselves, that's it.
Fair enough.
Well, in their defense, what drives the planning commission crazy is people build things, and they want forgiveness, they're actually asking for their built-in. So they're doing it the right way.
And if you do do, I mean, if we follow through, just be sure that your driveway meets the specs when it's built, right? It doesn't exceed it, because then that will be a nonstarter. I'm just saying, that's the way it'll work, so.
And if you do choose to pull this, do it in writing, if you, an email would be fine, but we would need to see something written from you, that you're pulling this whole thing and going to do something else, okay?
Hey, when did you state that you got 20 foot at the, at the garage or at the house? You got 20 foot up the street?
Yeah, that's what we passed, that's what the new ordinance says.
And what's in between?
That's what's in there, that's what's starting again.
Yeah. The reason that happened was because the planning, we had a great interest in the last 20 feet, we being city council, because somebody built a couple houses where you couldn't get in the garage. The planning commission had a great interest in the first 20 feet, because they were thinking about emergency vehicles being able to get on the property, and also during snowstorms, people, their driveway was slanted, so they were parking on the street, and then the snowplows can't plow the street, because there's people in the way. So that's what the planning, so it's two different, there was two different problems trying to be solved by one ordinance.
Well, so the, the, the next conversation actually started with your comments on a driveway somewhere that just dropped off the street, that's where it all began. And so we rushed through more or less an ordinance, I say passed really quickly on 1214. And then it was discovered, you know what, Bella Vista, 1214 really doesn't work, we need to look at this again. And so we passed the new ordinance in the last meeting, right? Well, if that one wouldn't have passed, then we would be back to 1214, and these, this couple over here would really be in straits. So we're in a lot better position, and I apologize to you guys for being here, but at least we have a solution. So we talked to Taylor, we'll, we'll try to get it done as quick as we can. Yeah, I'm sorry, John?
Yes, Larry?
I guess the important thing is, you submit a plan to build by, and many builders do that, but they don't follow the plan when they finish the project.
Jim does that, he's been building in Bella Vista for 23 years.
And, and so, the plan looks nice when you get it here, but we do check the project before occupancy permits are issued, and they do figure out that, well, the driveway really wasn't built by the plan, it shows up and becomes a problem.
Okay. Uh, next one is the resolution approving the mayor's reappointments of Laura Hoffert to position six and Mark Pelletan to position seven, and the tree advisory board for three year terms ending May 1, 2027. Mark Pelletan, I believe, is the man we put on just a few months ago. And the folks in planning had reported to me that Laura Hoffert has been really a great person on the tree board, and, and I think did work as secretary on it, and has been a big plus for the board. So those are the two people. Any questions about that? Next one is G, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract, Emory Sapp &amp; Sons, the amount of $111.92 per ton for asphalt street resurfacing, hot mix overlay. And further, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Vance Brothers, in the amount of $275 per square yard for slurry street resurfacing. Karen, would you like to give a little explanation?
Yeah, so this is where we put out our annual resurfacing for competitive bids. We do this every year, we bid out hot mix and slurry seal. We did get four responses to our bid, three of those being for hot mix, one being for the slurry seal, which is pretty typical for a year in Bella Vista. These are all of our local players we see year after year. This is a unit price, so that we can use our budget to the maximum and get as many streets down as possible. So we are recommending that the city council approve both of those contracts, they're both within our budget, the slurry seal is going to be under our operating budget, and the hot mix will be under our capital budget.
I thought we weren't doing any more slurries?
We quit doing the chip and seal, back in 2014, was our last year of chip and seal. We've been doing slurries since the city started.
Chip and seal is what we quit doing?
Yes.
Can you just, Chris, how's this compared to like our last bids we got?
They actually came in a little bit lower than what we were expecting, and so we were, because we had to make an estimate on how many roads to put on that list originally, and our expectation was a little bit higher in both categories. So, we're going to be able to add some extra linear footage to both of those places that we placed.
Is this a guaranteed amount?
Yes, this is their bid amount.
Do we have a feel on their timing, when they're gonna do it?
No, we have not informed them that city councils have ordered the contract yet to get on their schedule. We're expecting it to go through.
Yeah.
Time-wise, what does the contract call for for schedule?
We actually have, do you remember the date? I might have it here in the bid specs. We actually have a completion date of September the fifteenth, just to try to leverage their time here in town. But there are a limited amount of days for each application, with the exception if we add streets, which we do intend on, it'll extend that deadline by a little bit. I can give you the specific number of days.
So, as you add additional scope, they give additional time?
Correct.
How much is oil a barrel a gallon?
Eighteen.
So, oil jumps to a hundred bucks a barrel. It's not going to change. This will stay the same.
For this year?
For this year.
Yeah. So, I know the street folks are pretty pleased the way it came out because it was below their estimates, and then you can cover a little more ground. Okay, the next one's a resolution amending 2024 budget to recognize inappropriate people. Oh, that's right, we hit H. Sorry. Check market wrong place.
Since we have a pause, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
I have another question for the street department. Do we have a map somewhere that shows what's going to be done with what?
No, we don't put out one of those this early in the game because things can change. If there's new construction, we might have to pull a street, add a street, because it's not determined until the very last minute if there's going to be additions or not. We don't put it out there for someone to be, get their expectations, and then us remove that.
So, it's a planning tool?
Yes.
I mean, you have a map?
We do.
Yeah.
Public.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good question. Okay, I, resolution amending resolution number 2024-21, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract to Superior Automotive Group Asylum Springs pursuant to a state procurement contract for the purchase of four 2024 Dodge Durango all-wheel-drive pursuit vehicles in an amount not to exceed $170,760 for the police department.
So, this was something council approved last month? There was a clerical error on my part. You approved the four Durangos last month for a not to exceed of 160? These Durangos are on the state bid. My mistake was I used the wrong number off the state bid. And just to make it a little more simplified, when you go to the state bid contract, you can click on Durango, and it's actually layers deep because there are state bid Durangos for different packages. And I clicked the wrong one, and I didn't go layers deep where I added in the spotlight and the police wiring and things like that that we need that we normally get. So, the not to exceed number of 160 fell short, and so I couldn't get the four Durangos at that price. And so, if I would have realized this last month, I would have come to you and said the same thing, but not to exceed the 170, because that'll get me the four Durangos at the state bid price for how we need them built out.
You're still gonna be able to get those, even with the delay?
Yeah, he holds them for us. That's why Superior's so good. He's the only dealership that will actually hold these cars for us, so.
Officers are taking the vehicles home now, right?
Yes.
Had it for years.
Yes.
But is there any limit on how far?
Twenty miles. Twenty miles. Twenty.
So, we have any officers that live more than twenty miles?
I don't think so.
Not anymore? I got a couple because of that rule. We didn't have a twenty mile rule. We had rules for if you lived in town, what you could use the car for. If you didn't live in town, it was office, home, office, home, period. If you lived in town, the rules would be more lax.
Okay.
We're still on budget with this?
Oh, yeah. It's still in the budget.
Okay, thank you. We have several discussion items. The first one is internet connection, which was suggested by council member Honchel. Craig, I don't know if you wanted to say anything at the outset. We did have one of the folks from IT agree to come and talk about it.
That'd be great.
I got Sidney Reynolds, yeah.
At the start with you, I'll go over a little bit of what the broadband grant and our challenge map's all about. You should all have a handout. Excuse me, I'll run one of them. The Arkansas Broadband Office is set to receive a billion dollars in federal grants. With this round of grants, the goal is to fund projects to provide everyone in Arkansas with access to broadband service. One requirement for the state to receive the federal broadband grant is they have to publish a broadband coverage map and give residents time to challenge the map. The challenge map shows all locations that are either served, unserved, underserved, or funded. Funded means the location is known to be underserved or unserved, and funding has already been set aside to provide service. The Arkansas Broadband Office defines broadband service as 100 megabytes down and 20 megabytes up. This does not include satellite service providers. The way the state got the map is based on data from the Federal Communications Commission. The FCC requires all internet service providers to update them every six months showing where the ISPs serve and what level of service they provide. The state is planning to use the federal grant funding to provide service to all locations on the map that show unserved or underserved. If a resident looks at the map, and the map shows them it's being served, and they know they're not served or they're underserved, they can submit a challenge. And I provided a link here to the broadband office, and basically, if any of you receive emails from the public, you can forward those emails to me, and I'll reach out to them.
Do we have in Bella Vista, do we have in that map, are there areas that's not served?
Quite a few.
I know there's areas not served, but are they on the map, though?
Yeah, there's a lot of them identified as not served. And then there's quite a few of them that are listed as served, and the residents have said that either they can't get service, or they're wanting to charge them up to $20,000 to get service to their house. And that's considered unserved if it costs more than 500 to get service turned up.
You said the state's gonna get $1 billion from the federal government, just Arkansas?
Just for Arkansas.
And is that gonna go to the utilities to provide, to build the infrastructure out? That's where the money's directly gonna go?
This can go directly to the ISP, because that's what's holding them back, you know? Like, in a rural area, if you have three or four residents up on top of a mountain, and it's not cost effective for the service provider to dig fiber to go up to the top of the mountain, but this will bridge that gap. That's fine.
See, a couple things. So, whenever I got this, I went online. You go through the exercise, just like every, any other person would be charged with going through it, right? I thought it was a little confusing, you know, to work your way through it, quite honestly. Because when you first open it up, it opens it up to the map, and you're like, okay. And then you figure, like, first I just started making larger, 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 till I got to my property, but then it's like, oh, I can put my address in over here. So, you know, that was a little difficult. Then, once you get there, you know, you have to go up to the right-hand corner so you can do a test on your service, right? So, I don't know that a lot of people really understood, at the end of the day, if they did try to do it, how to work their way through it, you know? Because you have to be somewhat educated on broadband and how it even works. Or even if you can test your service, probably a lot of people don't even know you can do that, right? But then, when I looked at my house, it says underserved, and I have AT&amp;T. AT&amp;T, I have the highest level service they provide, which is 50/10. But it shows me it's being underserved, which would be correct for the definition they give. So, I just said, well, I don't even need to report anything because it already has me as underserved, right?
That's correct.
So, but even then, when I did my test, my test never came back at 50/10. It came back more like, it could be anywhere. It could be 25 and 11. It could be 36 and 7. You know, it varies, right, depending on whenever you do your test, even from minute to minute. But I guess where I'm going with this, so I'm underserved, right? So, what does that mean? What would the state do in the future to get me served so I have service that meets their broadband definition, right?
Right.
And does AT&amp;T even provide service in Bella Vista that even meets the broadband definition, period?
They do.
And so, I just noticed what was interesting. So, here's my house, and here, I blew the map out just enough so I could tell what everybody was, just how close there were homes that were listed as served. I was surprised by that. And then, there were some that evidently didn't have any service at all. And I'm just scratching my head how that can be. But I don't know what it takes. What is it, what will they do to build that infrastructure out to get, let's just say me, I have AT&amp;T. I have the highest level service to have. I have fiber optic, I believe, to the street in front of my house, but I don't have it from the street to my house. I have the copper cable, right, instead of the fiber optic. So, I guess where I'm going with this is, so they get all this information, and we did all this testing, where do they go from here? What, do they have a plan? Do they even know? Are they formulating a plan?
Well, after they gather this information, this Thursday is the deadline. Then the ISPs, they have a chance, they have 30 days to challenge the resident corrections, and also to create a plan on how to service residents. And then, in the end, the state is the one that decides, you know, how to provide that service. And it's gonna be through private companies like AT&amp;T or Cox. And in your case, I'm not sure what the solution would be, but AT&amp;T would submit, because, you know, all the ISPs want to submit a plan to get that federal funding. So, they'll submit an engineering plan, and then it'll be approved by the state broadband office or denied.
We were talking a few years, right?
Right, right.
And that's not the internet?
Yeah, yeah.
But that's kind of the thrust behind bringing us to the forefront, is that once the survey went out, I started getting a ton of emails. And I have been challenged prior to getting elected, you know, whenever I was just campaigning, you know, what are you gonna do about internet? Well, I don't know what to do. You know, we're a municipality. We do not provide utility services outside of water, and I guess we...
Even we don't do that.
Yes. So, that's the deal. So, I mean, so people get confused with, you know, what can you do for me? And the big problem that I have with this is that a billion dollars is gonna get handed over to ISPs. That's a problem, because who's regulating that money that goes to private enterprise? Because you're talking about handing money over to Cox Communications. Their earnings, 2023, was over $20 billion at the beginning. They need another billion dollars? And see, and that's kind of the complaint that I keep getting, is that either they're underserved, no service. I mean, I've talked to people who have sent me quotes from providers for tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's not even a conversation. That's telling them to get lost in a nice way. You know, I mean, it really is. I mean, you know, you're not having a conversation. And, you know, a common person who's just trying to get internet service out to their house, and that's my whole argument, is that, you know, used to, internet was a luxury, or it was, you know, kind of that kitschy thing. But now, I mean, sometimes, you know, you can't even pay your bills without internet access. So, it needs to be recognized as a utility. And, you know, if we're gonna build infrastructure statewide, you know, to me, it makes more sense on the state level, build infrastructure at the state level, and then have the ISPs compete for your infrastructure. Because what we're doing now is saying, hey, ISPs, here's a billion dollars. Go do something. And then, we're gonna sit on our hands for five years, and nothing gets done. Because that's the reality of how this works, and it's frustrating. Because you have people who are either on the fringe, or, you know, just on the outliers, that are, you know, right outside of connection. And you're telling them, hey, you know, give us 50, 60,000 dollars, and we'll run a cable out to your house. So, and like I said, that's not even a conversation. Please.
So, Sidney and I have spoken to the deputy director of the broadband office several times, in person and via email. And the way that the submission process works is extremely complicated and...
Go figure.
Not easy, for lack of another way of calling it. So, when we were clarifying on what we're supposed to do, because the way it works is the residents submit their challenge, and then we have to go in on the back end and complete it. But you can't complete it if there's not certain documents uploaded, but they don't really tell you when you're doing your submission what you're required to upload. What we have learned is what they're looking for is proof of those conversations. So, they have even told us that a PDF write-up of here's what I was told by the company two years ago or whatever is sufficient to upload. So, I don't know if they're looking for that information. And to be honest, there's, we have no control of what they do on the state level, right? But it makes me feel like they're aware of that issue because he touched on that in our conversations, and he knew that those were the type of submissions that we were going to be getting.
So, conversely, here you have an internet service provider with probably a billion-dollar system at their fingertips, right? So, you're counting on residents to go in and click a button and watch a speed dial come up and tell them that they got good, bad, and different service, right? Well, you know what? I bet that internet service provider can go to that account and go, quality of service, dude. And I mean, it'll tell them. They don't need, they want the people to interact at, you know, a low percentage, so they don't have to do anything. And they can do all this stuff theirself. They can check their systems. I guarantee you, they know exactly how fast the internet service is here. They know exactly how fast it is 20 feet from here. And that's the frustration, is that you have people, I mean, it's almost like Bella Vista, suddenly, we're on an island. We've never heard internet out here. Whatever. I mean, I don't, I don't understand, you know, and I really do have empathy for the people that live, you know, out. And it's not like they live way out. I mean, they're two miles from here, and they can't get internet service. That's ridiculous. And then, for the state to sit here and go, well, jump through all these hoops, and then we're gonna hand this guy, who makes a gajillion dollars, we're gonna hand them more money to sit on their hands and give you no results. And that's my frustration. Sir? Say that again?
Welcome to the federal government.
Yeah, I know. But that's what I mean. So, I mean, that's, the conversation I'm trying to have tonight is that I spoke with Jason, you know, I think we might have a workaround, move the needle. You know, I, I think we might have a workaround, move the needle as a community. I don't know. I'm trying.
I've got something that would be interesting to know and Cindy's worked. Cindy happens to be standing there, he's not the state officer.
Yeah, 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 I'm not saying this to you.
But how, how is the state gonna decide? This is my question, if I had them in front of me. How is the state gonna decide, okay, I've got a billion dollars? How do they determine the need, number one, so they're gonna have to have some formula based on the, the need? And then, how are they gonna decide, say in Bella Vista, not only how much, but is it gonna be AT&amp;T that gets it or Cox that gets it? How do they, and then, isn't there an inefficiency in that? In other words, if you let one company build it all out, you're gonna get more than if you divide it in half.
And that's where we're at right now. I mean, you basically have a one company that has a monopoly on this community. And they really don't do a lot. I mean, I'm, I'm telling you, from Facebook groups to emails to phone calls, you know, there's a lot of dissatisfied people that live in this community. And like I said, I'm not saying this to you, I'm just saying this broadly, out loud. You know, it's a problem. You know, it's a problem in twenty-twenty-four where everybody has a smartphone, everybody needs internet.
But I can tell you, Craig, I would be willing to bet you the state is gonna prioritize the east where there, there may be a house and three miles another house.
Absolutely.
And four miles another house. Because they're never gonna get anything. They look at Bella Vista and say, oh, there are houses everywhere, it's just a matter of time, they'll eventually.
Although, the guy did say that Bella Vista has the highest level of engagement anywhere else in Benton County. So, they're, they're participating more than anybody else.
Yeah, he did say it's the highest in the state.
Could either mean they, they do what they're asked or they have the worst service.
By doing the street tests and getting online and. We, we have like one or three that we need to assist with tomorrow that are just pending, that we need to interact with them to get them sent to the state. So, that's what we're trying to do to help. Basically, the state told me I had about an hour conversation with a deputy director today to kind of clear up what they're doing. The federal government's requiring them to let the citizens challenge the map before they can get the billion-dollar grant approved. So, that's, that's why they're putting it out. It's not real easy. They, they put it together in-house and Kathy's right, it's kind of challenging to put together. But we're gonna assist whoever you send our way, we'll help them get through the process.
What I was surprised at is how many residences look like they were tagged as served. I was really, I was kind of taken back whenever I really started looking all around at the community. I looked at me and I was like, well, shoot, I'm like in, in the minority here. I, I, I have the best service AT&amp;T has, but yet, I'm still underserved. So, if you have the potential for a hundred megabytes, right? And what did you say the download was, twenty? If you have the potential at your home to get that, that doesn't mean you're gonna get it all the time, right? It depends on traffic that's online as well, at the same time you're on there. So, if, if you have that potential and that's what you're signed up for, but you're not necessarily gonna get it, does that mean you're underserved? Or because you have the potential to get it at your home, doesn't mean you're gonna get it all the time, but you're still served? I don't even know, I don't know. It's complicated, it's just interesting to make, to me, the way this process is kind of working right now. I don't really know.
We're, we're doing our best with it. Even the messaging coming from the state level is confusing because when they first put it out, it was only local government can do this. Residents cannot do it themselves. And then, all of a sudden, oh, hey, now residents can do it. And then, they, they put out graphics that were a little bit confusing and it's, it just seems like it's very quickly pushed to fill a timeframe.
There's Bella Vista and all those gray dots say served.
That's what I'm saying.
And it's them near the whole, I'm sorry, but it's, it's, it shows the whole city except for these areas up here, along the northern area, which are underserved or unserved, but.
And that would be the question that I'd have at the state level is, you're a provider? Give me an audit of your own systems to that map. I want, I wanna see what you're seeing internally versus what the people are saying externally. And then, you wanna qualify for any of that money? You know, that's, there's, there lies the rub. I mean, as, as far as what people are saying they're actually getting versus what the, what they're assuming they're getting.
Would you be open to having a meeting with the deputy director?
Sure.
I'll be on with you if you wanna try to do it this way.
You would see like in Bella Vista, where we have the lines, they're supposedly pretty good. But I think part of the issue that we have is we have streets where they were, when they were initially putting the lines in, they got bypassed. And so, someone that's literally not even that far away, let's just say it's a hundred or two hundred feet. The, the numbers I typically get is AT&amp;T or Cox told me it'd be four or five thousand dollars to run a line to my house from where it runs down to the street. Like, you live on a lane, right? Which is typically a cul-de-sac or something like that. Those are the people I get contacted by the most.
And we can beat this up for the next three hours, it's not too very far. Let's get the meeting set up and see what's going on. Because it's just.
You don't want to sit here for three more hours?
You know me.
Oh, I know.
Hold you to a jury.
We can order pizza in.
Well, no, we need a food truck.
I'll stop, we still have to get the other thing.
No, I don't mean that so much, but we're gonna, we're gonna beat this up by nine more days. And we, we don't have a clerk because even our guys don't know what's going on.
No, I know.
I bet you the state doesn't either.
I'm just trying to.
Well, what's been happening, you know?
Yes, sir, yeah.
I've got AT&amp;T U-verse where I am now. The TV is on a dish separate, so I've got internet and telephone at the house. And if I, and if I, on a good day, I can do thirty-five on the download and ten on twelve on the upload on my U-verse service because it's all copper wires.
Now, with my definition, that would be considered underserved?
Yeah, I'll give you a call tomorrow.
About, about two years.
Cindy, in answer that question, I'd like to be at that meeting if I can make it.
Okay, I'll reach out to both of you and we'll set that up.
About two years ago, the county had money for internet service.
I think it was during COVID, what?
Yeah, and they offered that, they offered that money to Cox. And they turned it down. So, why, I don't know why, but of what impact that would have on, on this and other than that Cox.
Probably paperwork. Well, they extended that during COVID due to students being at home. Because that's the rural kids didn't have internet access to go to.
Yeah. There's a lot of things going on, Cox has a contract right now and it doesn't cover anybody in Bella Vista's in Northwest Arkansas. And it's a two-year contract and they literally have specific addresses. If your house is right next to the one they handle, you don't get it. And that's how it works, that's other contract, what's written up, so it's different.
Aggress.
Okay. Let's move on to sewer systems. Councilmember Snow wanted this placed on the agenda.
I think if we're going to do, if we're going to do fifty thousand people in the next five to ten years, fifty thousand plus, we need to do something. We, we gotta start something about a sewer system. But I don't see how we're gonna be able to continue with the septic system issue if the population is going to increase to that much. So, you know, what are we going to do? Are we going to?
We're trying to figure that out right now. I started conversations with Village Wastewater. John and I believe Craig, they made a trip over and they had a conversation as well recently. John and I, we just combined our notes and put together one document. We went back over to talk to Frank, just to be sure that we had all of our baseline information correct.
Yeah, Frank Knight.
Yeah, Frank Knight, about system, what the capacity is, how much additional capacity can they handle? What are their future plans? And all of that. And right now, they've got sufficient capacity. You know, the thing is getting lines down, et cetera. They have some future plans that they were gonna roll out in twenty-twenty-four that they just got permission. That they just got permission for, which is basically running lines up Finger Hatch or Hope, you know, to start in the old area of Cooper. So, they do, they do have plans. The thing is, it's, it's a private entity, right? It's not public. And really, as far as like what we, what we can do in the future, we're trying to figure that out right now. Because we're not gonna be able to do anything like wholesale at one time. It's gonna be an unfolding conversation. So, we're, we're gonna have a conversation, when is it? In April, the twenty-fifth or twenty-fourth with Richard Murphy again, get some more information from him. And then, we're gonna, we're gonna start trying to figure out if we can even work with a private entity or not as a public government. We don't know whether we can or whether we can't. Then, we'll probably end up somewhere talking to people down at the state to see if they can help us find some funding to approach the situation in some manner. And we don't even know exactly what that means. It is, it's, it's a complicated conversation here in Bella Vista and it's an expensive one.
Well, it's gonna need a bond issue because the current plant can't take anything from the hyenas. You're gonna have to build a whole new system up there.
Uh, no, that's not, that's not, that's not necessarily true. They're gonna take, they're talking about taking a line over two-seventy-nine and dropping it over the hill down to the intersection somewhere of Gordon Hollow Road and Scottsdale Road.
They're gonna have to build a new system.
Put a pump system up. No, they don't have to build a new system, they just have to continue to build the lines out. Right now, the system that they have is a nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine-thousand-gallon system. It's operating at about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallons, so they still have a lot of capacity.
I know, they got.
And on the same property they have, if, if they do build that out and fulfill that, then they've got land on the property that exists right now to build another treatment plant, the same size as the one they have. So, as far as like capacity to process, if you will, sewer in Bella Vista is, is not the issue. The issue is building out the lines. And, and the second issue is, again, it's a private entity. In what, in what manner can we work with a private entity as a public government? We don't know. And to your point, the money, I don't know, do we do a bond issue? Do we go to the state first and see if they can work with us? And so, it's building out the system, but another thing is hooking homes up that are currently on the lines, but they're not hooked up to the system. Uh, because we don't have a requirement right now to, to, uh, well, require homes that are on, you know, staying on the line to hook up unless the, the house sells on a transaction and that's the only time we're required to hook up. So, we could already hook up some additional homes, but either number one, people have to be willing to, to spend the money to do that if they're on the line. Or secondarily, can we go, can we source some money to help people that are on the lines hook up to the system and defray some of the costs? We're like in initial conversation, we're not exactly sure where this was gonna go. It, it's a big and complicated situation and from what angle do we approach it?
And the third problem, which he, he just barely touched on, I would characterize as a political one, namely that people have to pay, not just the city, people have to pay money and I'm talking real money to look up to it. And a lot of people are kind of like, they hang in there with their, with their septic and really the choice is hang in there with your septic or shell out around ten thousand dollars.
The estimate right now is around, is around ten grand.
Yeah, if you're lucky.
It went from four grand to ten grand.
Well, it was never four grand that I ever heard. The minimum was six to seven.
That's to be, yeah.
Yeah, a long time ago, not, not since I've been involved in it. So.
So, it's a lot of money from the city, it's a lot of money from the citizens, both, both.
So, anyway, the net of it is, we have been having conversations and we've been circling the wagons. We've been trying to figure it out. There, there's like, there's like low-hanging fruit right now, things that we could do if we had the funding. But that we, when I say we wouldn't have to spend a lot of money, we wouldn't have to spend nearly the money that you think we might have to spend. So, anyway, the conversations are taking place. There's a document, I don't know, but John, what's the name of John who wrote this?
Oh, Jim Foster.
Jim Foster. It's a really nice doc, document, it's called Septic Tanks: A Future Crisis in Bella Vista. It really probably needs to be circulated if you'd be willing to allow us to do that, just to start education, educating people in Bella Vista what a serious, you know, situation this is. To your point, I don't disagree with anything you're saying. We've been talking about it, we've been trying to figure it out.
We've used consultants in the past for a variety of things, is if would it not be prudent to retain a consultant? They can tell us about, they can tell us about all the different funding that will be available? Would this even be feasible?
Well, there's funding available to the city, to public entities or public agencies. But there is not funding available to private agencies. So, that, that's one of the, one of the difficulties, so.
What is it?
Go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna, I'm sorry to interrupt there. What I was gonna say is there, there are lots of ways that are different than what we do now that we have to look at in terms of how this all operates. In other words, and I think Larry and I may have talked about this at one point. Say, for example, Village Wastewater continues to own and operate the plant, but transfers all the transmission lines and all of the, the customer accounts and the, all bill, all of that to the, to the public, to the city, in which case, it would be a city septic system which we contracted with Village or whomever to provide treatment of our effluent. That's, that's one thing. If we did that, and, and this is, what I'm gonna say is one of those things that I, I think that you would say, boy, I wish we'd have known that when we first started talking about this. Here, here's what I'm about to tell you, because this is the part that's not gonna sound good. If the city goes all this route and we issue bonds and we decide we're gonna take a significant part of this city and build out the septic lines to connect in a situation like we've discussed, then we are going to have to mandate disconnection from septic tanks and connection to the sewer system immediately. It's not gonna be when you sell. Because we're gonna, if we're gonna borrow money in order to do that, we're gonna have to have a certain, we're gonna have to know how many customers we're gonna have. And then, we're also gonna need to know how many customers we're gonna have to know what rate we've got to charge. And, and if you're gonna, this, the reality is, and again, this is one of the, I'm not saying don't do it. We've got, I think it's appropriate issue to deal with, certainly, and it's a crisis. But we start going through the neighborhoods and digging them up. And we tell them, you're gonna have to have this piece of equipment buried in your yard and it's gonna cost so much to connect and now, you're gonna pay a certain amount of dollars per month that you're not paying now. That is a reality you all will have to face. That's just a political reality. I don't know if, how much stomach there is for that. Because that is what I would see would have to happen. If you borrow, especially if you issued, if you bonded it and did something along the lines of what we're talking about. So, there's the actual, how do you do it? And then, there's how do you convince people that they need to do it? And I'm gonna tell you, that second scenario should cause everybody a great deal of pause because you all have sat in these meetings and know how much controversy there has been just about requiring a connection to the sewer when the property sells and how many feet it has to be. And now, we're talking about, and this is state law, I know people aren't gonna agree with this, but this is in the books. The law would require them to cease using the septic tanks, close the septic tanks, fill them in, connect to the municipal sewer supply immediately or within a, within a definite time limit. So, it is, it is, it is complicated in that way as well. And I just wanna make sure that's stated from the very beginning, that, that that's an issue we're gonna have to challenge.
I think a good stepping off point would be check with the state, see if there's some kind of funding.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's why we were just kind of like taking this step by step. You know, and just trying to figure out where we are and where we potentially might go and if there's any funding. I don't wanna, because, you know, what's gonna happen is, it's already gonna start. Oh, the city is gonna, you know, start a sewer system and they're gonna require us to unhook and hook up. It's already gonna be done. Well, it's not. We're not even close.
It's a long, it's a long period.
And I'm very aware of everything that Jason just stated, you know, and I'm not making any big, bold predictions or statements about anything because right now, we're so early in this whole thing. We don't even know if Village Wastewater at this particular moment will even work with us, or even be willing to.
Or, or, if they're able to work with us.
Right, exactly, so. Because they have contractual commitments in terms of some of their capacity that they've already assigned.
And that's part of the conversation too, like what we were talking about is, it's not gonna matter until everybody's smelling it coming off the lakes.
That's unfortunate, doesn't become enough of a public, it's like, we're willing to do this because of the problems.
You know, and then, everybody's gonna start, you know, because I don't think anybody realizes how critical this is as a community, at, at community level. realizes how critical this is as community, at community level. You know, everybody in this room maybe, but outside of this, you know...
I think the best local example is Bethel Heights.
Yeah.
Their reputation is completely trashed and they became acquired by Spring Day. But, the difference is Bella Vista has a really nice reputation, is a beautiful, fun place. Bethel Heights never had that. The reputation's still trashed. Ours would really be trashed if all the lakes were bad.
Right. And as soon as the environmental group that covers the pollution, as soon as they detect that our septic systems are contaminating our lakes, they will come and say, city...
And she does pulling a poster. That's a great article.
It's a document.
Oh, it's a...
Yes, then you end up with things like consent decrees and federal court and Clean Water Act challenges and, I mean, nightmare stuff.
When it gets to that point, it's too late.
It just gets incredibly mad. It's a lot more expensive for you. Trying to say, and people, depending on what their own personal situation is, will fight it till they're dying breath, but people need to listen, you know?
It's like a house fire. Nobody's interested in telling the fire department to have a small fire.
So, anyway, you asked, that's what's been going on, and we're working on it.
Thanks for bringing that up, Jerry.
I think some of the ideas about how the local private costs are funded is a critical question. Some states allow the municipality to finance the local cost to the property owner and provide up to a 10-year payment period, or sale of the property, it becomes due and payable. And so, Arkansas doesn't have that provision, at least that I am aware of today. Some states do, and it's a separate bond issue, that you bond that portion of the contract so that the connection costs are covered and all of that, so...
The thing is, that's, we don't, you know, that's a conversation that we haven't even, we're not even close to having right. So, anyway, yeah.
Okay, the next issue is a squatter issue, also brought up by council members.
Squatters seem to be a popular thing around the country now. I think we have lots of opportunity for, potentially for squatters in Bella Vista. We have a lot of homes that are vacant for a period of time, whether it be in the wintertime or whenever it might be. I don't, you were going to research, Jason, as to what the situation is, what...
It's pretty much what I thought, Jerry, when we spoke about the, what was, we had discussed some recent statute in Florida that was adopted, and I've heard my own news stories about that issue coming up in a couple of different places, I'm not sure where. So, what, the best I can understand is, in some of these states, and I'll use Florida as an example, you have these absentee owners who may not, either come to the property or see the property for years. And you have people that have been basically living in there or claiming to live in there or for a number of years, such that they can claim what's called adverse possession in the law. And Arkansas has adverse possession. And in order to have adverse possession, you basically just take possession of someone's property in a manner that's open and notorious and adverse to the rights of the true owner. In Arkansas, you also have to have color of title and pay the taxes on the property for a period of seven years. And if you were to have all those things, it's potentially, you could go to court and tell the judge, hey, it's mine. I've been paying the taxes. I've been telling everybody it's my house. You know, maybe I have color of title, and that's the key that I think people may have difficulty establishing in Arkansas. I don't know what the rule is in Florida or other places, but I had some right to claim that I own it. Maybe I used to rent it, or I talked to that, you know, just some claim. And then they could go to court. Now, I don't know of a case where an outright house has been obtained by adverse possession in Arkansas. It's a concept. I'm much more acquainted with the concept of prescriptive easements, where a person can use someone else's property to the extent that it becomes they have a right to use it. They've always gone across that corner of that lot to drive across it, there was never an easement, and I've done it for 10 years, and now the owner puts up a fence and won't let me do it. Well, they can go to court and say, hey, I've got a right to, it's a prescriptive easement. You have acquiesced to this for a number of years. And it's not the exact same thing, but it's analogous. So, I don't know what the law is in Florida to establish adverse possession. I don't know if it has a color of title or a tax paying requirement that we have in Arkansas. So, Jerry, to answer your question about more information, that's what I've been able to determine. And I've told Jerry this too, I'm unfamiliar with anyone squatting in Bella Vista, and I think that if someone called, and I don't want to speak for the police, but I would advise them, if they said, we had someone call and say, hey, I own a townhome, there's some guy in there shackled up living, I don't know, it's been six months since I've been here, this is my place and he needs to get out of here. I think we'd go deal with a trespasser. And I, now, if that person ended up with some kind of documents and some claim, I mean, we're not going to get into civil issues with them, and we might tell that landlord, well, you just, you're going to need to do an eviction. And I think what's happened in Florida is you've got a lot of people who may have been either too late or having to do full evictions on cases where they did not want to do all that. And so, I can't speak to the motivation and what's led it to be a hot topic in Florida particularly, and I don't want to pick on Florida, I think maybe in Texas or California somewhere else where I've seen it.
So, if someone occupies, let's say someone rents a house in Bella Vista for three days, and at the end of the week, they're still there. Is that trespassing or...
I want to be honest with you, Jerry, that poses a unique situation because they are there on a lease, on a lease basis, they had a right to be there. They are now, and I know of no exception to this, they're what's called a holdover tenant. So, for example, let's just say you have what we call around here a long term, but let's just say a traditional house lease. You lease a house for a year and you pay $750 a month to live there, that may be a good rent nowadays. But anyway, and the lease ends, and the lease term, the lease itself may say, if you stay here, then you pay $900 a month on a month-to-month basis. Then they're a holdover tenant, they pay $900 and some dollars a month, every month, and then if they quit paying, then they'd be subject to eviction. If there is no provision for holdover, I mean, like I said, the police is not going to get involved in litigating the civil lease issue. We don't know what the situation is. And so, if someone had Airbnb and the people would not move out of it, I got to be honest with you, it's one of those gray areas where, I mean, they were supposed to be out on Monday, they're not there. You know, hotels don't do full evictions on people, but I'd be willing to bet somewhere in the country they may have had to, I don't know. All these things are generally regulated in the lease agreement itself. I'm guessing, though I don't know, that Airbnb has a format-based lease agreement which may deal with these holdover situations and give the landlord certain rights. I can't speak to every single situation. May I be the same to an Airbnb and VRBO? There may be no standard agreement. I'm guessing though that there is. So, I can't account for every particular circumstance.
Well, the situation of the long-term lease, you've got a year's lease, they pay for three months and just quit paying then.
Then you need to evict, you got to evict, you got to go through a civil eviction process, which is a lawsuit, is a notice procedure. Anybody that rents a lot of apartments can tell you, their Lindsay associates, they can tell you all about, or Lindsay management, rather. But, you serve them up with a notice, you've got 10 days to move out. If they don't move out, then you go to court, you file a, basically a lawsuit, they get another notice, they're served with a lawsuit, and if they don't get, you get, the landlord gets what's called a writ of possession from the court. That goes to the sheriff, then when the sheriff gets that, the sheriff goes to the place and knocks on the door and moves them out, changes the locks and, you know, does the act of physical...
I think what's happening, that's what's been on the news, particularly in some of these other states, and as you know, states vary with their landlord and tenant. I've always heard ours is not as strong for tenants as some places. But, what's happening is, it's a short-term problem. People squat in your house, then they have some piece of paper, they claim they have a lease, they actually never did have a lease, they just broke into the house and lived in there. And it takes you a long time to kick them out. And in some states, it takes way longer than others. And I think, actually, it was mostly happening in places like California and...
New York.
And Florida passed a law, a new law, to try to get rid of the squatter situation just recently, that's why they were... And I think Florida would be susceptible to it, because they have a lot of places if people are not there all the time. If people have a second place in Florida and they're somewhere else half the time, maybe more. Anyway, wondering is, does our municipality, do we need to do something about squatters or is this probably not going to be a problem for us?
Chief of Police is back there. I don't think, I've seen a call about anyone staying overnight. I mean, you have break-ins, you have people that may sleep on the couch overnight, but that's a breaking or entering situation.
If we have seen anything like that, I'm not saying it would never happen, but if we go out, we pick the label in and look at any documentation, if it seemed legitimate, then it would be, it would be a civil issue. If it didn't seem legitimate, then we throw people out. Simple as that. Somebody showed up with a lease, with on a napkin, I mean, I don't think that's going to really work with us, but, you know, we can go from there. I mean, so, I haven't seen the necessity here, though it's been across the country, but those states it's happened, I think somebody mentioned, they have really, really strong laws for renters' rights and less for landlords. I think Arkansas is somewhat the opposite. If I'm not, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, Arkansas is somewhat the opposite.
Maybe we should just wait and keep trying and if it's a problem, jump on it and do something about it.
My point was that it, things like this, when they start, seem like when they start and they mushroom into areas, it's kind of like the short-term rental. I mean, we've been on the front end of that rather than the middle or the back end, maybe it's been a lot easier to deal with, but, deal with it, try to do something to deal with it before it happens, but maybe that's the wrong approach.
Actually, people seem to think we're on the front end of it. When I had my calls with other mayors, they haven't done anything about it, so, well, we're waiting to see how yours goes. You're the one that jumped out there and did something.
We're actually not on the front end of it. Whatever other cities have, it's in the way.
They want it before us.
Right.
Anyway, so...
We just happen to have a group of property owners that disagree with us and so they...
But thanks for bringing that up. It's always good to bring things up. And why don't we move on to parking, Tanyard Creek walking trails.
I got a call from a lady that lives in the townhouses over there, and Tanyard Creek's become a rather really popular walking trail. And on weekends, they park the paint section full in minutes. On occasion, the POA has let them park on the grass as a rather large area.
The overflow.
Huh?
The overflow?
Yeah, on the grass. And, but they don't always open that up, and even when they do, it fails. I was there Sunday at noon and I figured, okay, the parking lot paint was already full. They were already into the grass, and people hadn't barely got home from church, ate lunch and come back to walk, so I can imagine what it would look like at 2:00 or 3:00. This lady, on numerous occasions, because she lives on the streets out there, people come and park on both sides of the street. Vehicles can't get down the street. She has personally witnessed altercations, people parking in front of fire hydrants and people actually parking on other folks' grass. So, she's wondering what we can do to alleviate some of that. And, you know, tell the POA, keep that grassy part open, because I went by today to come in here and the grassy part's closed. So, you know, I guess the only real solution is no parking signs, and I don't know how big that would go with the residents, but it may or may not solve the problem. So, she's asking for a little bit of relief for all this extra traffic. Now, it's worse on weekends, but that doesn't mean it's not going to be anywhere in between.
Well, you know that driving range that they have doing there? That's a large parking lot.
It's under construction now.
Yeah, but you can get in, because there's still parking cars. I don't, people aren't going to walk that far, even though it's a walking trail. People aren't going to go down there and walk back, trust me.
Yeah, I agree. I told the chief that this was going to be a topic. And there are some no parking signs out there on the street now, now by the park area. I don't know how far down, I don't know that they go down that residential street.
They don't go down the streets at all. I was just down there.
The chief, is that what you're explaining?
This came on our radar a couple weeks back, and so, we went over the whole parking the grass thing and was determined that, you know, obviously the POA can't park people on the grass, the way the city code currently reads. I don't think there's a variance in the code for that. So, we went down there and looked at it, and there's already no parking signs there, you know, entering that area. The direction I gave my folks is, you know, try to go through on the weekends, make sure the streets remain open, understanding people have to park there, but we want to make sure that the streets are passable. Just been told when I came to the meeting this morning that, or this evening, by some of the residents, that very often the streets are not passable. So, I've asked people to please call us when that takes place, because if we go out there and people are parked in front of fire hydrants or in front of driveways or streets aren't passable or emergency, can't get through, then people will be ticketed and/or towed. I don't see really a short-term solution for this issue right now. I just don't. The way the city ordinance currently reads, nobody can park on the grass. If we allow the POA to park on the grass, then we're going to have every resident that we've ticketed for parking on the grass and/or gravel and not SB2 in the city, you know, asking why the POA gets to park people on the grass and they can't. So, I think that's kind of where it's at right now, so...
Isn't our grass thing only for houses?
I don't think so.
Okay, so it's not. So, maybe we need to change that or allow them to use it. But that still, when it fails, they're still going to go down the street. Maybe some no parking sign would force them down to Tanyard, because it's not going to be under construction forever, so eventually that road will open up. It's open now, you know, you got to get past the sign.
I would just like to caution, you know, residents, and, you know, I think we need to help the residents, but residents, you understand as well, soon as we put up no parking signs, guess what? When it's not a problem, they can't park there either. So, we have to be careful about what we ask for here, because if we put up no parking signs, then nobody can park there. Even when the congestion problem is fixed, because the driving range is all fixed up and people can overflow there, then people who have those neighborhoods, live in those neighborhoods and they have family over for, you know, holiday weekends and things and, you know, they won't build a...
Well, there's always going to be a problem.
They won't build a park in the streets, because there'll be no parking signs.
There's always going to be a problem that way.
Well, I don't think this is going to need council action, but my reaction to, I spoke to that lady on the phone, and as you predicted, the POA contacted me about this problem, because they'd really like that extra grassy area to be allowable. But, one thing I think is obvious needs to be done, is on that side street at 90-degree angle where she's talking about where all the condos are or townhouses, whatever.
On Tanyard Drive.
Yeah, Tanyard Drive. You're going to have to say, no parking this side and have one side you can't park on, because you can't have cars there and vehicles not be able to get through. People couldn't even back out of their driveways and things like that. So, I think that's the obvious solution to that. But you still have a huge, the two people I spoke to the most about this were Taylor Robertson about the code and our esteemed attorney, and they were both very legal and very unsympathetic, frankly. This is a huge problem, and it's not a POA problem, it's a city problem, because it's not just a few more cars in our parking places, there's like tons. Now, the POA has an idea of making that extra area a parking lot.
Well, they do open it and they got it fenced off for that. It's not always open.
Yeah, but that's all illegal.
Well...
They can't park on the grass.
Well, you know, too bad, too sad if it solves the problem.
Well, I...
And they park on the grass on the 4th of July fireworks.
That's the only answer I can give.
I know. You're just trying to keep us legal and sometimes it gets in the way. Sometimes it gets in the way.
Yeah, that wasn't a criticism.
We could try the one side of the street and see what happens. We don't need to put in certain things for that. We try one side of the street and see what happens.
But there's not enough space, I mean...
The streets are standard width and narrow and it's curbed along Tanyard Drive, so that makes it even more difficult, because you can't get a car off of there without really going up the curb and parking on somebody's private grass.
The signage can be more specific than just no parking. I mean, there could be no parking between noon and 6:00 PM on Sundays or Saturday on the weekends. I mean, we have a, and then otherwise they could park, but, you know...
It's a matter of trying. We got to try.
Yeah, but I...
If it doesn't work, you try something.
Yeah, but if it doesn't work, you try something else. Park by one side, it'd be okay, two sides, it's killing you.
So the area where the grass is, it's a zone, it's a zone, why?
It's next to the parking lot.
I understand, but is it a zone where they can make a parking lot?
Their taters right there.
Yeah, it's just going to take a month to do it.
It's residential, single-family.
So we have to rezone it?
Not essentially, because it's a trailhead, and we changed the table to allow trail-affiliated uses throughout all zones last year.
So, so are they, is the POA thinking of making that into a paint parking area to add to what they have now? Is that true?
Um, I've been contacted by a developer that they have had basically look into it to see what it would be. She basically told me that they were looking into possibly paving it and expanding it, basically doubling the size of the parking lot that's there. But since that phone call, I've not heard or had another email regarding from the POA from her since.
I had a pleasant conversation with it.
It would take months, it would be six months. Summer would be open, this would go the entire summer, it'd be, it's a...
It would take another three months or something to get something, you have to approve it, first of all. You've got to come through there, and they have to have the engineering done to do that. So it's not a short-term fix, we can have it fixed by next year.
Yeah, this is a short-term fix, as it was.
So the short-term thing to satisfy the property owners who live in the townhouses, I think, is either parking on one side only, or an even odd parking.
That's confusing.
That's confusing to people.
Even though it should be obvious, that's confusing to people.
What day of the week is it, and I park on the wrong side, so that's not good. It's best to have signage out there that's specific. And the question would be, is do we allow it parking at certain times of the day, and then what times do we set for that? So we can say, okay, no parking from 11 to 7. 11 in the morning to 7 at night, that covers the activity daylight time. Is that a good, maybe?
But it's a legal...
Well, you're getting off topic. If you let people park on one side of the street, that's 10 cars, and you need room for 50 cars. So you'd be, we made space for 10 cars.
And you haven't done a lot, but you've done a little. So, and then, and then the people who live on that side of the street are now aggravated because you've allowed them to park on that side.
Yeah, they'll go...
Best to post it as no parking at all, or no parking on one side.
We need to do something so that people think we're not ignoring them.
On that, but...
You may be saying like, hey, parking wise, like what could happen, like, hey, just, or the city police can...
But the parking on the grass, it's great.
I can't tell you how many events we used to park on the grass, and nobody's... How many events have passed?
I can't, we can't just say, oh, just go ahead. But just, how do we do that and not have everyone in the city riot? We let them do what they want, just, oh, that's unconstitutional.
Out there, they're not going to riot, but you're already having fisticuffs on the street.
But that's unconstitutional, just for us to knowingly ignore the rules.
Yeah, yeah. Where have you been the first time?
Oh, Jim.
How many houses do we go by that's got the wrong gravel for their sidecar? How many of those? How many we got, we do a lot of that. We ignore, when we did the trash can ordinance, we ignored the daylight side of that steward.
Wait, we've got these other trailheads that said SB2, right? And if they just, even for temporary, they just put down SB2 to like, to make it a parking lot? I'm just saying, I don't know.
Well, I'm about to tell you. There are requirements about extending the parking lot, Taylor can talk to you, because that was a question I asked of Taylor.
How long would that take?
So why can't they just pour some gravel out there? And they can't.
Can't do that.
If they wanted to do that, it's still, any development of a parking lot that's five spaces or more requires a large-scale development and a grading and a road control permit from us. So they could do an LSD and request a waiver of our servicing requirements, and do service, you know, SB2, contain it, all that good stuff. But again, it's still the same process as asphalt.
It's got to be asphalt.
So they've got to do a drainage report.
The reality is, is that Tenured Creek Trail has become very popular in the city. And the available parking that's available is being exceeded by the people who live in the POA. And so it's incumbent upon the POA to enlarge their parking capability down at that facility. I think, I don't know if that's a given, are they doing something that you know of in terms of planning to expand their current parking lot?
Tenure?
Yeah.
I've only been contacted by one, the concept is what would be required.
Okay, so we should encourage them, I think, and the public can encourage them at the POA meetings. I think it's a POA problem, it's a POA amenity thing. So it's a POA parking issue that their facilities are being nicely used by more than they have ability to accommodate. So that's, it's not a city problem in the sense that it's our facility.
Here's why I said, it's not, that's not, I'll say for the benefit of everyone, that park is not public.
I know.
That's part of, that's a POA facility. But to my knowledge, those, that trail out to the waterfall and all of that stuff out there, that is not dedicated, there is no part of the license agreement that includes that, to my knowledge. So, I'd have to go back, I'm pretty sure of this, but at any point, the POA could just put up a guard shack and say, show me a membership card, and keep everybody off of that, that's not a member. I don't think there's any legal reason they couldn't do that. So, if it's different, Mayor, when I say it's a POA problem, so many of these trails are licensed to the general public and we do share in that. That particular area, though, specifically, was not.
Like an old-school trail.
And so, there is a little bit of a different scenario.
So I guess in the bottom line, my encouragement would be is that we approve no parking along Tenure Creek Drive there for the benefit of the residents. But the question would be for the residents, do they want a time limit so that they can use it for their own parties in the neighborhood? In other words, we put no parking signs at any time, that means no parties, no guests can, your house can park on the street.
Well, that's why I said on one side, then when you have a party, you can park on the other side.
The alleys are a little longer down there, so.
We're not going to solve this, right?
They do it.
Next? Thank you.
They could have carpooling.
When the lady called, and the fellow said so.
Offer the parking spots as a short-term.
She is?
Okay. And next one, potential guaranteed maximum...
We can't write an ordinance, John.
No, but we just let them do it.
Okay. The next one is potential guaranteed maximum price amendment for Phase Two of the fire station, number one, city administration renovation project at Town Center. Mayor Flynn and Chief Sims, and Chief Sims is here.
Yeah, just real quickly, the reason why this is on the agenda tonight, is I was hoping to have that GMP for the work session tonight, but he's got a couple of bids he's still trying to pay him right now, and he thinks he's going to get them sometime this week. So I was hoping to get the GMP in front of Jason so he can look at that before the next council meeting. So that's why we're having this discussion.
Before Monday?
Before Monday?
Yes, for Monday. That's why this is on the discussion, because it's bad.
Thought we'd been through this before, that we had a maximum price for doing this project.
Do what?
By recollection.
So what we're doing, this is actually, this is the other part.
We have a maximum price for Phase One, which was changing the police station and the fire and living quarters. Yeah. And this is Phase Two.
City add-on.
Phase Two is the city hall and the fires.
So do you have, do y'all have those drawings? What it is, basically, the city administration, which is a two-story added on to the existing two-story. City administration on the bottom, and then fire administration on the top. Total of about, just under 7,000 square foot.
That's on the north.
Yeah, it's going to be on the north, coming out the north, in there.
It's where Maryland is.
This is actually down there.
Well, it was.
So that's the only reason why we're here, is because I'm hoping to get that in front of council on Monday.
Steve, has the construction manager given any sort of estimate of the numbers they expect to see?
So, right now, just to give you an idea, what we've been seeing in our recent construction that we've had in the past, anywhere from 384 to 400 square foot, so put around the 2.7 million for the second phase.
How much?
About 2.7 million.
2.7 mil?
Yes.
So that's not within the budget anywhere?
Yeah, currently it's in the capital budget.
That's what I was going to say.
For the most part of the project this year is in capital budget, yes.
So is all of the, is all of the 2.7 included in our budget?
So, most of the money's in our budget, it's not going to be spent this year, that's the thing, but most of the four and a half million of that is in our budget, capital budget.
I'm going to drill this into your original presentation.
That's correct.
I think this summer, it trips over to the next year, right?
That's correct.
2025.
Yeah, this is, this right here, this phase here, once it gets started, we're looking at June completion of next year, of the two-story.
Well, if memory serves, you did your due diligence, making sure that we had money to progress throughout.
Yes, that's right. We should be okay through the capital until, and then next year we'll adjust the budget.
What are you thinking on completion of Phase One lately?
So, right now, Phase One, we're looking, currently right now, they're getting ready to start shitrocking, and once they get shitrocking going, it should move pretty quick. I'm looking at somewhere around June, July area timeframe, roughly.
Okay.
Off topic.
So new generator and everything in?
For that, it's been ordered, but it's not in yet. As a matter of fact, we're just waiting, we got to go up to the training center again.
That's what I was going to add, the training center, is that...
So the training center, for the most part, the support building's done, where they should be hopefully installing a generator this, about the end of this month. That's the only thing that's left on the support building is the training.
I knew we were getting close.
Yeah, and they're doing touch-up on the training tower. Right now, we should have that turned over to us by the end of this week, and then we're having our open house on May 3rd, which is important.
Thursday?
It's May 3rd.
Oh, May 3rd. Right. So this was you passed out, right?
Yes.
And this was the one that was sent by Wanda, so it's a little different.
Yeah, it could be. Which one is it sent by Wanda? Whatever I've seen...
Right after the agenda Thursday. One of these says fire, and it's at city.
It's the same, the same.
Should have been the same. So it's just under 7,000 square foot for both levels, and judging by what prices we're doing right now for, I think 384 is for the fire station, Bradford Fire Station, which we're still kind of in those prices, comes up to about 2.7. So you remember in Phase Ones, in Phase Ones, guarantee maximum price, it included infrastructure for all four phases. So you've got to remember, when we're putting in new infrastructure, you've got to tie in everything together while you're putting one thing. So there's a lot of things that was in Phase One that's in Phase Two and Phase Three and Four. So the budget number will kind of adjust.
One little settle that I might mention is the lease that CDS has and the building inspectors have, you know, over at the shopping center that has Table Bella, who's just saying it. Anyway, those leases run out November 30th of this year. And when that happens, those people are going to move over to our building, and they're going to be, the fire department is going to be in their new location. So those folks in CDS and building inspector are going to be where the fire used to be, the fire living quarters, they're going to have offices there. So we won't have any more lease payments anymore.
We'll take the train room over to the back portion of the fire station. We'll still be, administration will still be in the front section?
Well, it's not super high right now, but it was going to double. And the good news is landlord has people to take over every bit of it.
Okay, hold on a sec.
Yeah. They can't wait for us to leave. So they can charge more rent for the next guy.
Well, that number's just the estimation, it could be more, it could be less, I don't mind. Judging by the 400 dollar a square foot for the commercial building right now, it puts it at the 2.7 million for that second phase.
Well, thank you. Any more questions? Okay, with that, I think we can adjourn, and we'll see you next Monday. Thank you. Is there a number of discussion?